Meeting to order, if we could all rise for a pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The secretary perform a roll call attendance, please.
Mr. Sirock?
Yeah.
Here.
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 Here. Here. Okay. All right. Okay, all the board members have received the minutes from the November 6 meeting, so if there's no discussion regarding the minutes, so entertain a motion to approve the minutes as drafted.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay. All right, our first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding 33 Middle Bush Road site plan and lot line consolidation. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. So moved.
Seconded.
All right, motions made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening, I'm Troy Bojekowski, engineer for the applicant, 33 Middle Bush LLC. The project before the board is for the reconstruction of this familiar site here on Middle Bush Road. Reconstruction of this building for contractor storage type use. The board is considering the site plan approval and a lot consolidation for the two lots that comprise the project. So this is, this is a representation of what the building will look like once rebuilt. It's a much needed improvement, for sure. And here's the site plan for you, I'll just real briefly go through it, the dark gray is the existing building, the new building will be constructed in the same footprint. A little bit of an expansion of the gravel maneuvering and parking area with loading bays on the east side of the building. The previous building was served by a well and a septic system on the property. Both of those will be replaced and will require Health Department approval. Other approval, other approvals will include County Highway for the curb cut onto Middle Bush Road. Don't really have too much more to say, I'm here to answer any questions or...
Okay. All right, does any board members have any questions regarding the project?
I do not.
No. Okay. Just going back here to my notes. Have you heard back from the Dutchess County regarding any of the issues regarding the driveway? And...
No, we heard back from them the last time around, a couple of years ago when we received the approval, that they take no objection to issuing a permit for the driveway here. So they've seen these plans. And the Health Department has been on site for the soil testing for the septic system. We anticipate submitting that application this week for the septic in the well.
Okay. Okay, the, and also there's no outdoor storage, correct, on the site?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so with that, this is a public hearing this evening, so we'll open the floor to a public, if there's anyone here that has any concerns regarding this, please come on up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Donna Cherico, I live at 25 Middle Bush Road, my backyard borders the property, that's in question. My first question is, does dissolving the property line create one single property that will now be zoned commercial? Because the current piece of property behind...
It's not, it's not, no, it's not that it's, yeah, it stays...
Because my concern is that when I attended the original presentation for this project, when it first was getting going, one of the repeated selling points of the presentation was that the residential property would remain residential and nothing commercial could be built on it. My concern is, what does this mean, this change, this dissolving of the property lines? What does that mean for the future? What can be done additionally on that property that is directly behind my house?
Nothing, because it's a wetland, there's a big little wetland area, they probably can't build on it anyway, regardless of its commercial or residential.
I can also say that as part of the use variance approval, there's no sign on this plan that restricts any kind of development on that parcel.
Commercial development. Okay.
Well, because my well is in the back of the house, so that's one of my concerns. And also the devaluation of the property, if there's a commercial property directly behind us with contractor storage.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't aware of the ZBA's determination regarding that, so it sounds like that's a note, and as well as I believe it probably have to be also put on to the site plan as well.
Yeah, I think it's on there.
Okay.
So the property remains zoned residential.
Yeah.
It has a use variance permit, the use...
The building in the front?
But the zoning remains residential.
Okay.
The zoning has not changed, that's the nature of what use variance is. Commercial, the permit to use says otherwise not permitted.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
Okay.
My name's Gerald Webb, I live at 23 Pleasant Lane. My first concern is, I wasn't notified. You have a connection, he called, the plans call it a discharge of the stormwater into the county storm sewer, it's really a connection to the county storm sewer, which crosses Middle Bush and connects into the town of Opener Storm Sewer, which discharges on my property at the end of Pleasant Lane. So my real concerns are all the mitigations you're doing, because that whole area seems to slope down towards the road, and if there's going to be any additional pickup of water, it's already emptying into a flood zone. So I'd like to see the downstream part of it addressed.
So the, so you're talking about what's downstream of the...
No, of the water coming off of the property.
Right.
Is going to end up in my yard.
Okay.
Yeah, I think he's downstream.
That he's downstream, right, yeah. Okay, is there any other, other concerns you have other than the stormwater issue?
No, I think property would be a big improvement currently.
Okay. Okay, we'll have that issue, we'll get that addressed. Okay, is there anyone else here this evening?
Yes, I'm William Bostwick, 24 Middle Bush Road, I just have a few issues, one is the stormwater as well, because now we have the school district that has a little parking lot, and they're going to plow all that snow, I'm assuming, into that grassy area right behind the tree line, so all that new snow is going to be pushed back there, so it's going to add to the wetlands and water. Next thing is, is the deliveries, since it's a contractor's place, what are we going to do with semi trucks when they get delivered and that, and that over the hill, and the truck's trying to back in, that's a little bit of area because the state troopers go fast, and the ambulance go fast, and everybody speeds in this road, so if the tractor's trying to back in, and an unfamiliar driver, then it might be an issue. Next thing is, I have is that maybe, because it's up over the hill, that turning left, heading east may not be, would be no, no turn left sign, all turns right, because if you have a truck with a trailer of some sort, you're contractors again, you might take a little slower to get up, get up speed, and the car's going down the hill, and it could create more havoc. And that's about it, just the wetlands from the, and when Glass Unlimited was there, I knew Tommy, and we were in there a lot of times, and there were water, I mean, not just, not feet of water, but there were, you were up to your ankles in water in the back of that building, so that was years ago. So, and we haven't, all we did was add to the wetlands, and especially now with the school, that's going to add more and more water level, so, and I guess he's saying is that the water just is going to go across the street into his property, so that's more, every time it snows and the school piles up the snow, it's going to go at his way.
Okay.
And that's all new, because that, the school finished up their job in August, so anything's happening now, a year's cycle, we won't know what that's going to happen.
Okay.
I guess my thing is, the traffic and the people turning out with, you know, turning left with trailers and also semi trucks.
Okay, all right, the tractor trailers, yeah, will have to be addressed.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else this evening regarding this? Okay, seeing none. So... So I guess the question is, I know that, you know, the tractor trailers, I mean, that was brought, brought up before, so I mean, really, is there the ability to be able to have them navigate that property and not just sit on the road?
Right, there's no tractor trailers that'll be making any deliveries or going in the site, we showed the trucks that will go into the site, it's basically a 30 foot long and a 40 foot long truck that can get through the site, and I brought some photos. The fact that there's no outside storage allowed on the site, there's no, there's no outside parking of trucks overnight, really kind of limits the use and the intensity of the site, so what, what I anticipate is, for example, somebody opens up a plumbing business and has a truck like this that they can't park in the driveway because they're in a residential zone, someone like that, this would be perfect for, the materials that get, that get delivered can only be the, the materials that can be stored within the building, so we don't anticipate tractor trailers, in fact, the site's not designed for tractor trailers, and we've kind of gone through that, it's going to be more of these type utility vehicles, we anticipate. This would be the largest truck that we would see coming to the site on a very infrequent basis, you know, it's really, you know, the use of the, the building could also be for storing, you know, classic cars, you know, things like that, I don't think it's going to be a high intensity use, there's room for three tenants there, but the site's not designed for tractor trailers, and they're not going to be allowed on the site. As far as the stormwater management question goes, I can try to address that as well.
Okay.
We have proposed a detention basin behind the building, more towards the north end, adjacent to the wetland, that will reduce the flows coming from the site into the county drainage system on the street, so that the, the calculations show that the flows, the peak flows from the site will actually be a little bit less than what's currently out there, and that's a requirement of the town, and of the county, in fact. The county will review the stormwater study that we put together, and they've already granted a, or conceptual approval of the driveway where it's at.
Okay, so the drainage is basically is addressed, it's going to the back?
Correct.
Okay. All right. All right.
Can I add something, since you changed this for this week? In 24 Middle Bush, I'm familiar with contractors and how sometimes things don't work quite right, and they get behind, and they have this whole big truckload of kitchen cabinets or windows or flooring to come in, it's on a tractor trailer, oh, what do we do with it, the site isn't ready for it, so just put it in the storage for now, that's on a semi trailer coming from Ohio or wherever it's coming from, so what are you going to do about that, it's not allowed, but he's going to unload the truck, because the tractor trailer is going to charge him minutes for having the stuff on his truck, so there is a possibility that a tractor trailer will unload that.
Right, but it's not, it's not a regular occurrence.
No, but it's still, it's still a danger when an unknown tractor trailer driver, who's not familiar with the area, tries to back in, unload his, unload his load, so there is some, a little bit, because contractors don't always, things don't always go right.
Right.
Just adding that.
Okay. Okay, so, I mean... Basically, so I mean, in terms of that issue with the tractor trailers, I mean, putting a note in the resolution would satisfy that requirement, I'm assuming? I mean, there's no control, I mean, it's up to the, it's up to the responsible parties on the site to, to have to ensure that they're, they're not getting deliveries, you know, through that, that form of transportation.
Yeah, I mean, it's not really much different than residential property, you know, tractor trailer is what we're going to have, but...
Right. So there's really not too much to, to address there, then? What we're saying?
Agreed.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay. All right, so at this time, I guess everything is addressed, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion's made. Motion is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay. All right, so with that, at this point, I mean, it seems like everything's been addressed with this application. Entertain a motion to authorize the planner to draft a resolution of approval?
No conditions there, really, right?
Well, we do have a couple of conditions, I guess, that need to be addressed, so may as well discuss those first, I guess the one was the, first and foremost was the no outdoor storage?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess then the second would be, is it, if we're going to put a note in there regarding tractor trailer deliveries? Be the other?
Nothing over 40 feet, because I think the template...
Right, if you say there's anything...
The template only accommodates a 40-foot truck, yeah.
And then we want to make sure it stays residential, the zoning?
Well, that's, that would be just a reference to the, because the ZBA has, has made that within their resolution?
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things to do would be to copy, to provide, what we have, to provide the planner with a copy.
He has one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, basically, the conditions of the ZBA...
Referencing, referencing the zoning board, which was normal, because they, they needed that approval prior.
And the conditions in the use variance should then be spelt out in the resolution, I think it's, the trucks have to go indoors at night.
Right.
So there were a few major concessions to give them the use variance, but they agreed to.
Okay.
Is there going to be a time that people can go in and out of there? I'm just curious.
Hours of operation?
I'm just curious, because if I live behind them, I wouldn't necessarily be there at 2:00 in the morning.
Yeah, you don't want to beep beep beep.
Yep. Yeah, that's why I'm trying to figure that out. Trying to make sure that...
The hours for construction is 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM during the week, and 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM on the weekends, so they shouldn't be starting up at 6:00, you can call us.
Well, I think she talked about like hours of operation, once they're going, so they don't have big backup alarms going off at 12:00.
I know, it's going to wake me up at 4:00 in the morning.
You know, we've had complaints where like a bus company starts, calls the buses at 6:00, and we tell them they can't, they have to wait until 7:00 AM.
Yeah.
Is there anything about hours of operation that we were planning on putting in a resolution or that are on the plans or anything?
Usually that falls under a, that usually falls under special use permit.
And I don't have the, I don't think I have the ZBA with me.
Yeah. I mean, this wasn't required to have...
Do you have it?
Yeah. Wasn't required to have a special use permit, but... If it's a...
If it's, I'll take that.
No, no, if it's something that we can include, then we'll put in for the hours of operation.
Did you guys have an idea of hours of operation, or...
No, we don't have tenants yet, so we don't have an idea for that.
I'm trying to imagine, you're not going to get tenants, that would go at 4:00 in the morning.
That's the application itself. No, I don't think so.
Well, they just basically just have to adhere to, get the tenant sets, which is what?
She said, I think she said 7:00.
Nine months later.
That runs to like 9:00, right?
Oh, this is the, okay. Current zoning.
I don't see the trucks having to be put in as a condition, it might have been discussed, so if you want the trucks indoors at night, that would be a condition, you'd have to put in.
There was a, there was a condition, I don't know if it's made, but we know overnight parking, or would be put in on purpose?
Yeah, but look, it didn't make...
It doesn't, I don't think it... Because it was in the original, in the old...
So they, okay, so in, within this, there was discussion... There was discussion regarding a 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Area variance or use?
Operation?
Yeah.
This is the area, what time of use, do you have, if he has to use, what are the conditions in the...
I'm looking under, under section nine of, I guess it was some, what is this under? They discuss the hours of operation, the narrative for 33 Middle Bush Road variance. It was section nine, there was a, I'm surmising that the hours of such operation would be somewhere between 6:00 AM and 7:00 PM. No work would be allowed within the building in the evening that generates any noise, but it's not unreasonable that the offices perhaps would be used later in the evening for business operations.
So if they're contracted and they're leaving at 6:00, they can leave wherever they're going to work, and they have to be done making noise at 7:00, but that's a request of the board, and then I guess the offices can stay open later. But did it have a condition about vehicles?
So this is back in, on the original...
I would say it was back in 2016.
No commercial building, maybe constructed on vacant lots, 296837, such like, may only be used to construct a separate system, like stormwater, so it's designed according to New York State U.C. guidelines, if necessary, to provide landscaped, and separate systems. Any construction activities on the premises, on the site plan, or the plan board, where have shall not be provided to tenant spaces, there should be notes, how they're starting to get the equipment and materials, and five, there should be no overnight parking or commercial motor vehicles on the premises.
So should that read on the premises, or should it read outdoor?
So it's anywhere on the premises, oh, I guess, should be outdoor, right?
Right, should be outdoors, and, right, because I guess it was supposed to be an indoor, allowed to park inside, but not outdoors overnight.
So what we're adding to it is the tractor trailer, which wasn't coming to the...
Well, just anything over 40 feet.
Right, the deliveries of, right.
Yeah, so that'll automatically just exclude the tractor.
Yep.
And then just have Malcolm quote all the things in the use variance, and that should cover that, then.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So with all that said... Back to the motion to authorize the planner to draft the resolution with those conditions.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. All right, motion's made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye. I have one ask, or maybe two asks, I don't know if it's the appropriate time, if we're lucky enough, next meeting, to be granted conditional site plan approval, I don't know if it needs to be written into the resolution to be able to pursue a demolition permit for the building prior to all the conditions being met, we'd really like to get that building down, I think, be an asset to the, to the town as a whole, to get that building down, and also consideration of cutting, you know, the trees down.
Well, clearing and the demo are two different things, right?
Demo, yeah, well, clearing, well... Clearing's usually something that's held to site plan approval. Even, even a demolition, I'm assuming, it's within our purview to allow them to have a demolition prior?
Well, if, without your approval, he won't be able to.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so if somebody wants to amend, I guess it would be part of the resolution, right, to allow them to start prior?
No, because if it makes it part of the resolution, you can't do it until the resolution's signed.
So, okay.
I think, what do you think, Jim, should it be separate as a motion and not part of the resolution?
Yeah, I mean, with respect to demolition permits, it's kind of a little bit weird, because in this case, there is no site, I mean, technically, there's no site plan here. This is a building that pre-existed, so, you know, it's not like it's an amended site plan.
All right, so, so the motion, so we should just, with the resolution, to draft the...
You know, I think it's separate, a separate board, you know, most...
All right, so we've made that, okay, so we made the, got a motion a second to approve the drafting of the resolution, all right, take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, seeing none, motion carries.
Motion, I just want to write it down, you or Malcolm's in there?
Yep. Okay, all right, so now, additional to that, to allow the applicant to obtain a build, a demolition permit, and tree clear, I'm assuming you issued a tree clearing permit?
No, we don't have.
No, you don't have any of that?
We have a timber harvesting permit, it's not really a permit, you just have to notify the clerk.
Okay. All right, so with that, a, I guess as a separate, as a separate resolution would be is to author, to allow the applicant to demolish the building prior to final site plan approval, or actual signed...
Resolution.
Approval, right.
Yeah, I'll make... Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay. So the motion's been made. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Okay. Okay. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is a discussion regarding the Curry subdivision.
Good evening. My name is Charles May. I'm here representing the K&amp;J Partnership. The applicant is Kyle Lawrence. The property is located at thirty-nine dash forty-one Middle Bush Road. It was formerly Stefano's Restaurant many years ago. Since then, the building is no longer being utilized. We have an application, we had an application before the, before the board to subdivide the property. The property is owned R twenty, forty, that is with sewer, R twenty, R forty, and private well. Since then, we have subdivided the property. One lot is forty thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven square feet and the other one is thirty thousand nine oh seven square feet. We have been before the board previously and we addressed the comments from the planner, we believe, and we also have addressed the comments before the town engineer. To recap, we also had submitted plans to the Duchess County Department of Public Works for our sewer line, which extends from thirty-nine Middle Bush up to Camilli Drive, to an existing sanitary manhole. You may remember that the, that Will Truf... William Trufilio from the Duchess County Department of Public Works has approved the sewer line. He also has approved the site distance at the existing driveway. Having said that, we also have before as a resolution, which I believe is open for discussion. I believe that Kyle may have some comments for the resolution that he was presented.
Okay.
So in reviewing the resolution, section four E calls for tri-muni approvals for the proposed sewer connections. So I'm optimistic that they're gonna approve the tie-in early next year. But in the event they do not, I'm trying to look for some sort of exit strategy. That being, replace the existing septic fields that are there now, assuming that they comply with Board of Health.
Okay. So we did have discussion this morning. That would only be if, if for some reason tri-municipal doesn't, doesn't approve this.
Right, my intention is the tie-in.
Is the tie-in and...
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So with that, is there any discussion by staff that we need to have regarding this?
Just for the record, the, so the, there is an area variance that permits the smaller lot without municipal tie-in. So that's what the variance, so, you know, it's a, it would be a minimum of forty thousand. I guess one of the lots is gonna be forty thousand, the other one is less, which is what would be required. It would be forty thousand square foot without septic. The ZBA has granted a variance to permit it. And that was, that variance was granted before the sewer tie-in was contemplated. So based on the area variance, it's permitted. So, you know, so you have the option of doing either. And again, both are subject to approval by Department of Health. So...
Okay. All right. So... So we're gonna basically amend it to also include that if they don't get tri-municipal approval, then they would need to get Board of Health approval for septic system.
Well, they, they need Board of Health approval for both.
For both, right.
So...
Okay. All right, so that was the only item that needed to be addressed, correct?
Yes, that's it.
All right. So I guess at this point, if nobody has any, doesn't want to discuss this any further, entertain a motion to approve the resolution as amended. So...
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. So you're all set?
Great, thank you.
Okay, there you're welcome. Okay. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is a site plan and special use permit for Over Creek Farm Brewery and Tasting Room.
Good evening. Kyle Ahern with La Bella Associates, here representing Over Creek PL. Alex Reed, Phil Shaw are also here tonight, and Allison Spear. So really don't have much to update you guys on. We were here two weeks ago. We had the public hearing. It was closed and the draft resolution was drafted. The update that we do have at that time is the other approvals, the other agency approvals required for the project. We've just been making progress on those. So last time I was here, I mentioned that the archaeologist was out at the site that day, here that day. That work's been completed. The report is put together. It's been a lot of photos and documents put together for the architectural side of that. So the site disturbance report will be submitted in the next couple of days. And then the architectural revisions will be made and submitted separately, hopefully the, also within the next week to two. Besides that, the... We saw the treatment design progress, so we'll be submitting that. The D-Wage. The planning board goes, the draft resolution was put together, and the board will act on that tonight.
Okay. All right, so... Thank you for the update there. I guess you've reviewed the app, you've reviewed the draft resolution?
Yes.
Okay. And with all that, there's no, I don't see any, any issues with any of the conditions regarding the, the resolution at this time?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess at this point, it's really just a matter of us voting on the resolution. So I guess at this point, if anybody wants to make a... Go ahead and get a motion, sorry, blanked there for a minute. Motion to go ahead and approve the resolution as drafted?
I'll move that.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. So...
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening. Okay. All right, so our next item on the agenda this evening is Cube Smart Outdoor Storage Recreational Vehicles. Amended site plan.
Good evening. Mark Day, Day Scott. Tonight, we're here with a project the board had reviewed a number of few years ago. The applicant is seeking approval to do RV storage at the rear of the existing building. Right now, there's parking back there. We're parking a lot. The applicant is proposing to utilize that area for an RV storage. And the project would require installation of a fence around that site, installation of gates. We're gonna relocate the, the refuge enclosure. Refuge enclosure right now is off to the north end of the parking lot. We're gonna have to locate it to the smaller site that we're, that we're showing. We are proposing additional lighting around this, this area to provide security. Basically, this, that's it. So we are proposing the fencing, as we said. We're gonna have security gates with entry, entry, entry car greeters. And we'll have an exit gate on the north end of the property. It's the intent to be able to enter on the south side of the project and then leave the north side of the property. It's a one-way through the proposed storage area. That's about it.
Okay. So it would be just the in and out and probably the parking spaces would be angled below?
Yeah, they're like...
So they pull in back in and then shoot right out?
Right, you're gonna back in and... Yep, and then leave.
Is there room for more than fifty spots?
Uh, right now, I'm showing, I think we have fifty in there.
I think you had fifty, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we have more room here, but we're not...
Nothing else back there?
Yeah, they don't...
Okay.
This, yeah, this is about, this is about as tight as we could get it. We wanted to put it back here, obviously, because we didn't want any... There's no visibility from this site anywhere, from my earth's corners, but we thought, look, let's start here.
Okay. All right. Okay, so you've received the letter from both the planner and the engineer? Okay. Yeah, we see that, I mean, the engineer's letter, just looking just for more elevations. Some spot elevations, and then the planner's letter had a little bit more. But I think earlier, we've hashed out the issue for the outdoor storage use, which I guess is allowed as accessory to the, to the indoor storage. But the lighting, not only did the planner make note of it, but the Duchess County Department of Planning also made comment, I guess, looking to reduce some of the, the lighting on the site. It was to try to reduce it down so that there's no hotspots of more than five-foot candles.
Oh, you're talking about here?
Yeah, that area.
Yeah, we can do that. I, I know there was a comment made about the bug rating. Not every light that we can find has a bug rating. I think the lights we're proposing do not have a bug rating, but we can, we can, we can try an alternative light or we can raise the, the height of the pole to reduce the hotspots.
Okay. But then the, the height would then possibly exceed the, the current requirements that we have?
Yeah, that's, that's one of the problems we're having with these, these lights, because we're limited to a certain height. You create hotspots, because even the LED lights are, they're, they're actually quite brighter than, than the metal halide.
Yeah.
And we have talked to a, a lighting consultant, and he thinks the limit, they're limited by the height of that light pole.
Okay.
We're running into that problem a lot.
All right.
There's no, the houses aren't on the back side at all, are they?
No, the nearest, the nearest home is, is over here. Our site is back here.
Okay, you're talking about the one by the, by the far entrance, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, everything's on the south side of the hall.
Yeah, we went out and looked last time, I remember.
Yeah, this, yeah, actually...
Yeah, but wasn't there one or two yards along the...
He's over here.
With that, yeah, and then...
Yeah.
Yeah, but when you take that access road that runs around the back?
This one.
That goes up to the back of the building, isn't there one or two backyards that back up to that?
Uh, no, that's, this is on...
Okay, I just wanna make sure that the light ain't gonna hit those guys and they'll see it at night.
Yeah, this property runs way down.
Yeah. It's the bottom.
It's way down. This, this property line's over here.
Okay.
And the lot is...
Yeah, so that, that access road kinda runs down and then makes a, it makes like a ninety-degree turn?
Correct.
And then it comes along the, the back of the building with, at the bottom of the building there?
And it comes down onto...
And it makes another turn and goes on to the other property and out?
Right.
Okay. So, yeah, so I think from what I remember, the, the property's backing up or to the, where the bottom, you know, the bottom portion of his map there.
They're way...
That's where they were on that turn, so they're, they're not really affected by any of this at all.
Cool.
All right.
For lighting, in order for him to reduce the foot candles, he's saying that he's gotta either raise the pole to reduce the hotspot or we could have to raise, let him allow him to have a little higher foot candle. Then the hotspot's gonna be bigger because the pole's lower.
And we are proposing full cutoff. So these things are directed straight down.
Are the poles at max height already?
Yeah.
You raise them a little bit.
Is it a car max or something? Use those, those, what do you call them?
Lovers.
Like the louvers on there, yeah, to shut it down a little bit?
Yeah, we actually have. This is what we're using.
Right.
So it's full cutoff, straight down. It's adjustable. We can adjust it for the, the color. Problem is, is when you're limited to a pole height that we're at, these hotspots are really hard to get rid of.
Yeah. All right, not to put you on the spot, Neil, but...
Get a little thought from...
I said, I mean, I, I, I don't have, like luminaries and things like that, I mean, I, I don't have any special insight or any, you know, more knowledge or experience. I mean, how, how tall, how, what is the maximum height of the light pole allowed here?
Fifteen?
Yeah, fifteen foot.
Fifteen feet, so when you get to an area light, I mean, they, when you're that short, they just...
Yeah.
They really create hotspots.
Right, and what's the, what's the ideal height, would you, or do you think would be a...
I didn't run the ideal. I stayed with code, you know, because we're supposed to...
Keep in mind that most RVs, like fifth wheels, are probably, some of them are ten to...
Yeah, some of them are high.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, I know.
You block a lot of light, it's gonna bounce off the sides of it.
Yeah, you got fourteen feet on it.
You won't see the light after you go down.
That's true.
Yeah.
You actually may need a taller pole there. You actually may need a taller pole there.
I was saying, can you raise it?
Yeah, I mean, if it's gonna work to make the adjustments.
Then it reduces the hotspot.
Especially in this scenario, only because it's... We're really not affecting anybody.
Did CarMax end up raising their light poles slightly?
No, they got it done with.
No.
They were able to make work.
They're in public view and everything.
Yeah.
That was a different story.
Yeah. Theirs was, yeah. Theirs, they pretty much ended up staying with what they had and we didn't make that waiver on that one.
How many poles do you have?
The AC unit on the top is 14 feet tall.
Yeah.
How many poles are there?
Uh, we got 13, or proposed.
Fourteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen is what you're proposing.
I mean, CarMax had a lot more than that.
You won't see those behind the fifth wheel.
No. Yeah.
Yeah, they want to do their job.
No.
I don't have a problem making the adjustment with the pole.
Okay.
It's a one-off kind of project, kind of application.
So, as long as it can meet the intent of what's stated in the...
Correct.
In here, looking to get a... We're trying to get the five-foot candle or less for hotspots.
Based on the location of the project and where he's doing the sliding, I don't see an issue.
Okay.
I agree.
So, long as the, you know, the outside boundary?
As long as, right, we're not having a light trespass. You know, there's nothing leaving the site.
Reduces that, so.
Okay.
So, I'll adjust it to, like, balance it.
Yep.
Less hotspot, a little more height.
Yeah. Okay. And you do have some distance there to property line, so it's not... You're not gonna have light leaving the site.
Right, I'm zero about here. And once you raise them, you're gonna create less, so.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, I guess that'll be... So, okay, so I guess you'll address that. All right.
Oh, it's just pulling up.
Changes have... Quantifying the outdoor... Oh, okay, just make, I guess there was a note there, just put a plan for a square footage as well as the number of parking spaces.
Okay. I think we have it on... I think it's on... It's on proposed parking.
It is on there?
Yeah.
All right, so it's an on.
And then there was a comment from the Fire Prevention Bureau about a hydrant?
I think we have hydrants all the way around.
But it basically was just, I guess, was the...
Well, did the Fire Prevention Bureau review it, I guess? Yeah, they did. They did review this.
They said they wanted to keep the hydrant clear and then...
Yeah.
I'll go check it, but I don't think we're in the way of it. There's a hydrant in front and here's one on the side, but I'll...
Yeah, I think this is... Yeah, actually, I think they also had a comment regarding a...
The access gate?
The access to the site using a... Yeah, that's right. Yeah, I think I got that right. The... To use a, what you call it, a siren-activated.
Oh, okay.
Gate opener. So... Okay. And then the turning templates have to get added to the plan?
Yeah, we actually had our group.
Is on there, but that's for...
That's an RV. I mean, if you can get an RV through there, that's a fifth wheel. So, if you can get a fifth wheel through there, I'm sure you can get a pickup truck.
Yeah, no, 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 that's... Yeah, but the... Okay.
I mean, I will show.
That shows an RV? Is that... That depicts an RV?
That's an RV.
Okay. Okay.
That's a fifth wheel with a pickup truck.
Okay.
And then there's... One of the comments was, I think, from Malcolm. Is there a limit on the largest vehicle that you can... Largest thing that can go in there?
Uh, these are signs for the biggest RV that are currently going down.
Forty-four.
Forty-five. Forty-five, as you see the big bus.
Yeah, forty-four, forty-five with a hedge. So, all these spots over here are set up for that. On the right side, they're a bit shorter, but all these on the west side are set up for 44-plus.
Cool. Okay.
And for boat? Taking boats, though?
No boats. We don't like boats. No, there could be boats.
You're gonna have to unstep the mast?
Can the board put that if they're okay with boats that either work?
Sorry?
Boat is an RV, ain't it? Recreational vehicle. Boats, quads, trailers.
Right, so I don't want it limited to just RVs.
No, no. Right, right.
An RV, a boat is an RV.
Yeah, it is.
I know I'm living as an RV.
Anything you have fun on.
Yeah, basically. Okay. All right. So, with that, we know what needs to be attended to on the plans. But your question comes in, with this as an amended site plan, is there a requirement for a public hearing?
I think it's a due expression.
Huh?
It's up to you.
And it's also a type-two action.
Huh?
It's also a type-two action on the sequel.
Right, so it's really no real need for that. Do we need to make a motion to waive the public hearing? Yeah, that's the bigger thing. So, at this point, I mean, if everybody's in agreeance, entertain a motion to waive the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
May it be seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's... That matter of business is done. So, with this, is there any... Terms with staff, is there any objection if we... I mean, these are minimal changes at this point. Obviously, it's gonna take a little bit... Well, take a little bit of time for you, I guess, to go ahead and get these... To address these couple items.
Do we come back to the board or can we just?
Well, that's what I was gonna... I don't know if anybody wants to see them. I mean, we discussed them pretty much, so, I mean, does it...
What would be the limit on the height of the poles that we would let them take there?
That's the only thing that's really out in the open, right?
Yeah, I mean, he still has to work out the number of the pole height.
If you guys are willing, I could probably go to 20 feet.
Yeah, I would say 20.
I'll max it out at 20 feet.
Yeah, I would say 20's good.
Okay. All right. So, I mean, the stuff come back anyway, 'cause the stuff to vote on a resolution of approval. So, in the interim, they authorize the planner to go ahead and draft a resolution of approval with these conditions to be met. If everybody's okay with that?
Yeah, make that motion.
Okay?
I'll second it.
Motion's may it be seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, our next item on the agenda is discussion regarding TeraGrosso subdivision.
It's a long time no see.
Okay. This one is... It's this one. Okay. So... I guess you're here also for...
No, I'm just standing.
So, I guess you've got... No, that... It looks like the... Okay, so on this one, it looks like the planner's pretty much... I guess the environmental issue with the turtles. I guess it looks like the... All the correspondence and all the issues that were brought up with regard to the turtles should be added to the...
Correct.
To the plan. Which I guess you're looking to do. Also, the site distance, I guess, is DPW?
Yes.
Because it's county road. And they did weigh in on this, I'm assuming, at some point?
I believe they did on the prior...
On the previous application?
And as you all may remember, this road, we're on All Angels. It's... There's a considerable amount of site distance in either direction.
All right. And I guess that's pretty much... Much for that. I guess the engineer's letter, I guess, is still the... I guess they still need to address some comments on there. But these could be all conditional?
Yeah, I don't see anything in our letter that is any kind of showstopper, so...
Okay. All right, everything seem... Okay. Seems just looking for details. So, I guess with that, there's really nothing... We can authorize with this one also a resolution of approval for the planner?
Is the public hearing still over?
No, we closed the public hearing on this.
And you waived the 62-day.
You watched your... Yeah. Yeah, unless somebody has any objections to authorizing the drafting of the resolution at this point.
I don't have any.
No? No? Okay. So, with that, did somebody make the motion for this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion's may it be seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. For the December 4th?
Yeah, all of these resolutions that you planned.
Yeah. Do we have a lot on for that? Do we have... I know we have, there's Downey and...
But are some of those votes too? Just one for the innocent, I tell, the Horizon. We have an independent public hearing, Verizon, School Hill. So, we have Downey.
Oh, we're not gonna do Downey?
We have Joey escape.
No, okay.
And then just an extension.
All right, so it sounds like one is being dropped off, so... These are just voting on the resolutions. I think we've... If nobody has any objections, we can put these on for December? Everybody's got it?
Yeah.
Okay.
December 4th or 4th?
December 4th.
For December 4th, yeah. That'll be the last meeting of the year.
Okay.
Oh, it was Nick and Lynn.
Yeah. Okay. So, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any non-motion carriers?
Thank you.
We'll see you in California.
Have a great holiday.
You too.
Take care, you too.
All right. So, with that, we're at the end of the agenda for the evening. Is there any other business that we need to discuss?
Something dawned on me about that first application in Middle Bush.
Okay.
We didn't take into consideration the junior high and traffic coming out of there.
Okay.
School buses in the morning.
Yeah, she mentioned school.
I just think that should have some kind of consideration. I don't know, you know, a big truck coming out of there in the morning, taking a left, with a bus coming in this direction. It's a little...
So...
I just think it warrants a little...
The DOT would.
Yeah, so here's the... So, the thing is, it's not a town road. It's a county road. So, it's up to the county to really weigh in on it. I don't know if we have any authority for that.
Can we make a recommendation to the county? That there'd be like no left turn? But then that would be funneling them all up through the village, the trucks, so...
It would.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause usually that falls under the county's purview to what they would allow or not allow.
I mean, they'd have to post whatever restrictions would be on the road.
Right.
I mean, the problem is, you can't...
Normally...
If you put it on the site plan and it doesn't make it to the road, it's not.
Right, yeah, 'cause normally, if it was a town road, we can do that because then it's, you know, it's within the town's purview to do that.
I mean, the other issue is that there is an existing curb cut that was there.
Correct.
So, in some respects, that kind of...
Yeah.
May change some of the vested rights.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. Yeah, I understand where you're coming from. I mean, and again, it's not like it's... You know, again, the business, you know, they're gonna... It's not like somebody's working out of there, too. Like, they're getting, you know, whatever.
I'm thinking more...
It's not like it's a warehouse. It's not like it's a warehouse. You have constant traffic in and out. Or like a retail store, you know, where somebody's going there. You got multiple people going there to purchase things. So, it's an increased... You know, you have trucks that may go out once a day and then they come back. Go out once and then come back once.
On the delivery side, maybe you want it to throttle back during certain hours, maybe when the buses are leaving or something. You have a 40-foot truck that's gonna pull across and back in. I'm just trying to think of scenarios here that would not be a real good idea.
Basically, they wouldn't be backing in that spot.
They're turning... The turning template set a right in, loop around the site and right out.
If you have a 40-foot truck, that right turn's not gonna be easy without going into the other lane.
Yeah. Well, with the police station right down the road, I mean, that creates another issue because technically, when they do that, they're not supposed to...
Maybe the county can put signs.
They're really not supposed to cross the double yellow line, you know, and then back in, too. That's a whole...
I'm just thinking from a safety aspect. It might be something to look at.
Maybe those slow yellow arrows? Maybe the county could put signs up or...
I think they had driveover curb going in there, didn't they?
The what?
Didn't they have like a driveover curb going in there? That would make it easier for a lot of that stuff.
Yeah, well, no, they have a curb. I mean, I don't think it's... I don't think it's a... I don't think it's a mountable curb.
Yeah, if they had a mountable curb.
That's a tough turn. You're in a 40, 35, 40-foot truck, that's a tough turn. But something to look at, maybe.
Yeah. Well, it kinda makes it a little more awkward with it not here to agree to something.
No, I know.
That's... That's... We'd have to get staff to reach out to them for that, to make that an agreement.
Okay, I'm done with it.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Without... So, no change? What do you think?
I don't know, it's kind of a good point now that you brought it up, but a mountable curb would be...
Right.
Taking out 90% of that. Yeah, a little...
And you amend that when they come back with the resolution?
Is there a comment?
It could.
Is there any comments from the county?
Any comments?
It's kind of a weird... It's, you know, the county never gets involved till like after. They wanna...
Right.
Yeah. Which is...
I mean, I would... I wouldn't be surprised if they would require a mountable curb.
Which is kinda... Which is kinda wrong on their part because, for whatever reason, came in, up to discussion the other day about the old thing with Old Hopeville Commons, where they turn around and we approve one thing and they turn around. They went for their, you know, their work permit, their highway work permit, and the county just changed it totally.
Right.
Yeah, and it was that whole big, you know, round around in circles, actually. I mean, I even made a call to the county and they were like, oh, we can go ahead with what you want, you know? And actually, Pizza Terra made that same call. We went around in circles and they ended up doing what was originally proposed. But, you know, they have a standard book and they said, well, if you deviate from the standard book, you know, you have to get the director of DPW's permission, you know? And it, you know, kinda like, you know, something they should really think about. So, if they see something, they should say something. You know, at least it makes it easier and then not, you know, like after the fact, we're trying to chase them down.
Well, we also had an issue, too, with the... What's the place on Myers Corners? The... Bill Parsons' place.
Oh, 228.
228. That was like an offset and they wanted the driveway moved. Two twenty-eight, there was like an offset, and they wanted the driveway moved, and what did that take, four years?
It, it was crazy, 'cause all the landscaping and everything you approved, then the county did like a taking, and they.
Right.
They widened it.
Right, right, that was all part of their, that was all part of their road improvements.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, which kinda, which kinda conflicted with what the site plan approval was.
Correct.
Yeah. So.
Because I know, I mean, at the time they came in for the use variance, they were doing the work on Myers Corner, I mean, on Middle Bush, and I know there were some, you know, that I, I think the applicant had put in, like, what they had requested to see, and they came back with, like, something totally different.
Right. So kinda, it kinda takes that whole thing when you do, like, try to do a coordinated review, it throws that all out the window, because they're gonna just tell people to do whatever they want them to do.
Well, because what they, because what, they, they take the position that their work permit is a type-two action, and they don't have to coordinate with anybody else, so that's, that's how they do what they do.
Right, right. So, um, all right, so back to the Meyer hand, do we, do we want them to change some of these things, and?
I'm not sure what the change should be.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah, I mean, the policing of the, the tractor-trailers is kinda on their own at this point. We're kinda stuck with that.
I mean, I think maybe the thing to do would be to have them coordinate with Dutchess County Planning, I think the mountable curb is certainly, you know, a good idea, but